Hello, everybody. Thanks for your patience. Sorry about the delay. Just pulling up the agenda here. Okay. We're coming back into open. We turned to close, we did that, we're back in open, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Do we have a volunteer to read the land acknowledgement? Would somebody like, from the audience, like to read the land acknowledgement? No?
I can do it.
Okay, awesome.
At Skokie School District 73 and 1/2, we respectfully acknowledge that we own the lands of the A'Jibwe, Ottawa, Potawatomi, Ho-Chunk, Miami, Menominee, Sac, and Fox Nations and Kikapu Nations. These nations were forcefully removed from their traditional territories and these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As a public institution committed to building a foundation for learning, leadership, and life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and histories of dispossession upon which our schools rest. As educators, we recognize that by being silent, we are complicit in the ongoing oppression of Indigenous peoples, and we take this first step in fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present-day implications as we pay respect to the keepers of the land and the land itself.
Thank you, member Jacob. All those who are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, is now time for public comment. If anybody would like to make public comments, you just need to go to the podium. Please introduce yourself and remember to keep your comments to three minutes, please. Okay. Don't forget, you can make public comment at the end as well. Correspondence, we don't have any. FOIA requests. We had one FOIA request. It was received on January 28th. And it was responded to on the January 28th, so we are all set there. Staff recognition.
I can start. One thing I want to highlight, and it's in Dr. Hightower's superintendent report if the public would like to see it. But I think we can all admit that things are changing in our country and it has been very scary, especially in education and when working with children. And I just am really comforted and impressed consistently that this is a place that still believes in the dignity and individuality and personhood of each individual child, as evidenced by our commitment to supporting our non-binary and gender non-conforming students at Camp McLean and in other situations. So it's really important to me, as a queer person, that we have a society here in this district where despite what happens outside, we still provide safe places for the children inside of our district. So thank you to everyone who makes that happen every day and continues to push back against homophobia and transphobia. Thank you.
I can go next. Sorry. I know when we're a part of a smaller district, we can find that many of us wear multiple, multiple hats. Many of our teachers, our parents, are involved with PTO activities. Many of our admin are supporting things outside of the scope of maybe the admin role that they have. And I see that and we recognize that, and that's what takes a district of this size to truly thrive. So it's a thank you to all the people watching at home and all of those who show up every day. And I think we, as a board, feel incredibly supported to have a team to lean on as we just have changes in the atmosphere, whether it be climate-wise or temperature-climate-wise. And I'll leave it at that.
I would like to give a shout out to the music department. We have solo ensemble coming up, and they've been working really hard with the kids on the vocal side and the music side. I think it's next week and the following week. And just all the work that we put into that and so that our kids are represented. And just a private shout out, the basketball teams are doing well this year. And so just give a shout out to the coaches who are working really hard with the kids.
I want to give a shout out to everyone at Middleton. There were two nights, the literacy night and the fourth and fifth grade dance. It happened, I think, two weeks in a row, right? And so they took, you know, basically, it looked like to me, the whole staff was there and was helping with both of those. And just my fourth grader was having a blast. And I think I saw the smiles on the kids' faces, and that's what it's all about. So we really appreciate that extra time that was put into those events. So appreciate everyone at Middleton so much.
I'm not texting. I was looking something up to recognize. I can't find it. All right, well, I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. DiStefano because one of our alumni from McCracken has gone on to make quite a career of himself, and I just think that's amazing, and I can't find it, but it's... Thank you, Daniel Eisenberg. And I just think it's awesome. I just think there's so many students who go through our music program here and go on to have music careers or just have music be part of their lives, and it really just makes me very happy. I'd also like to do a shout out to Karen Hayes, who has just been awesome in her role as interim CSBO. And just picking up the work and really digging in, and I really appreciate it. But also just want to thank all the folks in our district for making sure that all the kids in our district have a safe place to be. And that I really feel like grateful to be on a board that is committed to making sure that our families in our district are safe and our kids in our district are safe. And that I know without question that everybody in these buildings support that. And, you know, these are scary times, and I think we need to be really public about that and make sure that we understand and our families understand that we're here for them. So without further ado, we'll move on. We need to adjourn to the public hearing for the approval of the e-learning plan.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the public hearing for the approval of the e-learning plan.
Second.
Motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Amiwalah. We are now in the public hearing on the approval of the e-learning plan. If I understand this correctly, we're not like, we're just, this is, the state requires us to have an e-learning plan in place. This is like a post-COVID thing, right? And Kevin's going to explain to us. We're not like making major changes or anything to our e-learning plan.
No, 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 no major changes. The document you have reflects our current practices for e-learning. Districts are not required to submit an e-learning plan. It's if we want to institute e-learning days, then we have to have a state-approved e-learning plan. One of the steps in the approval process is that we hold a public hearing. And once that is cleared, it is sent off to the ROE for approval by them.
What's the ROE?
Regional Office of Education.
So it sounds like there won't be a formal presentation or anything, other than what's already listed on here. And I know something that comes up often is the number of e-learning days. Is that something that is in consideration or conversation with this? Yes, no?
So that's a really good question. So the state-approved e-learning plan affords five e-learning days. So they don't really scale that. You can't apply for, you know, fewer than five. Yeah.
And our district has currently used four of them. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And just so everybody knows, tomorrow school is happening. And we just don't have after-school programming. Is that correct?
That is true, as of now, yes.
For any parents who are watching and wondering, we have school tomorrow. Okay, any other questions about the e-learning plan, comments?
I mean, I think it's just, you know, to those five days versus, you know, we're currently at four. I think it's important to remind people that that's because of some of the technical things that happened in McCracken. It was not the plan. So in a regular year, I think, looking forward, I know we have calendar stuff later, and, you know, it's like one day when we have election day. So the only plan would ever be to use one. It would be emergencies, snow emergencies, temperature, that would make more.
Any other comments, questions?
And then just one more thing. I see the expectations listed for teachers and staff to have certain pieces of curriculum by 9:00 AM. For example, has there been just conversation about, one, the practicality of that from a teacher's standpoint? Obviously, I couldn't imagine it being any later based on when the school day starts. But even from like a student perspective, is it helpful to have it an hour in advance? Maybe parents can help proper read, or is it just kind of standard state guidelines?
I mean, it's, the state does not dictate necessarily times. The e-learning guidance from the state only spells out that we need to provide a full day of instruction. So that's five hours worth of instruction.
Any other questions? Okay, so I think I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Latasha Nelson. The public hearing is adjourned. I feel like I just keep calling us back to order. We're now back, calling back to order. Okay, so the superintendent update is in the packet. It's pretty straightforward. If anybody wants to read it, you can read it there. Were there any questions about it? There were two in-school suspensions. Do I have to read those aloud? Or do we not really legally have to do that?
No, I just wanted to clarify because there's been some changes to this report that came through policy. So we discussed that the prior suspension report only reported on outside of school suspensions. And we wanted to more fully capture like the picture of exclusionary discipline. So you may see more things listed on this report, but I think it's important to contextualize that we have now added in-school suspensions as well. So that those aren't sort of, we realize that that's exclusionary, sometimes necessary, but exclusionary. So we do want to make sure that we're reporting it and tracking it.
So it's not like an increase. It's just, it's just a new reporting system?
It's a change in reporting. It's also a change in the agenda item title. So from suspension report to exclusionary discipline report.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about it? Okay. Oh, this is always a favorite topic. School calendar review 2026, 2027. Any comments or questions about the calendar for 2026, '27? So to be clear, this is not for next year. It's the year after.
Not a question, but not sure if there is alignment over spring and winter breaks with D-219. I know that comes up sometimes, so something to be mindful of, which I can't answer right now either.
I, sorry. I used D-219's calendar to mirror our breaks, both for spring and for winter, as well as the Niles Township guidelines.
Do they have the 26, '27 up already?
They have 26, '27 and 27, '28.
Okay.
In the packet, if you look, there's kind of this Niles Township guidelines for standard school calendar. That was your, I assume, your kind of baseline for putting it together. I also just want to celebrate that there are districts where the calendar for the next school year does not get released until the spring. So the fact that we're working two years out really gives families and teachers and staff in general a time to prepare. So that's a really good thing.
You know, I just, looking at this, it's, it is like, I think it's because of the dates. It's pushed back a week a little bit. So it looks like our last day is on June 7th, is that correct? Or 8th?
7th.
7th. Was that, is that because it mirrors the...
I think because we're supposed to have 176 days of attendance. So if it were a week, we started a week...
We always start on the fourth Wednesday of August, for whatever reason. So some Augusts have four Wednesdays, some Augusts have five Wednesdays. So when it's in August, it only has four Wednesdays, it means we start kind of late in August, which bumps us then a little bit into June.
Is your concern that we're coming back on a Monday?
No, I was thinking about, you know, because parents have to figure out with the summer camps and all of that. Are the summer camps that year bumped back a week too, you know? So are they ending on the August 14th, and then the extended one on the 21st or whatever?
I want to be clear, like, it says June 7th is an e-learning day. We're not actually in school that day.
There's two different blue colors. It's confusing. I got confused too.
We should probably change this color.
I will take that into consideration and change the colors.
Yeah, some other color. Yes, that's very confusing. I was like, why are we doing an e-learning day on our last day?
I would also say that up at the top, and I think this is just a typo or didn't get transcribed. It has the opening and closing dates, and it says May 28th is the last day of school. But then on the calendar down at the bottom, it says the 7th.
Thank you. I fixed that.
I think it's just you didn't, yeah, at the top. Just changed that one out.
So the last day of school would be June 7th. Is that correct?
And then this one's just to review. Next month, we'll have the final one with all of the edits.
Okay.
Can I just point out, like, the March and April, what's highlighted in yellow? Is that spring break? Like, all of those dates?
So, yeah, I accidentally left the April highlighted. My bad, sorry. I was trying to mirror 219. So 219 goes on spring break on March 22nd. Niles Township guideline says that we can go on spring break on the last week of March that has three or more weekdays. But since we are mirroring 219, we, I highlighted 22 through 26, and I forgot to un-highlight the first week of April. My bad.
Thank you. So spring break will be the 22nd through the 26th? Okay. Any other questions or comments or corrections? Okay. So to be clear, this is informational only. We will approve at the next board meeting. Are there any questions for the administrators on their updates? Student services update. Did you want to highlight anything, Angela? Are there any questions for Angela?
I don't have anything to highlight unless you have questions for me.
All right.
I guess, I guess a question I have is, I know that there is a lot of consternation, both in the teaching system world, but also in like the parent world around the possibility of the Department of Education being dismantled. I know that what that predominantly would have impact is special education. Is there, can you kind of just give us an overview, quell some panic, that kind of thing?
Yeah, certainly. So I think what, the conversations right now that are happening around the Department of Education really are about grants. And so we obviously, as a public school district, we do receive grants. But I think when we're looking at entitlement services under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that is a law. So if the grant were to go away, which I don't think will happen, but I don't have a crystal ball, we would still be obligated to provide the services. It would just mean that our bottom line would be stretched.
Thank you. Can you clarify, when you say grant, you mean, so the reimbursements that we get because we're providing the services would be the grant?
Correct. The federal funds that are attached to the law, we would no longer potentially get, I suppose. I don't have any crystal ball that says that would happen, but I think that is the concern, but, right? Like, if they went away, what would happen to services in our district? And so the services wouldn't go away. We would just have to use other funds to provide them.
And when we look, and maybe you can't answer this question, Angela, maybe Karen can. But like, when we look at our annual budget, I mean, the federal dollars is always a very small percentage of our overall income. It's usually like 2% to 3%. Is that usually the reimbursement grant money that we're getting for the services that we're providing? That's not additional on top of?
Correct. Most of our funding comes from tax dollars.
Any other questions? All right. Any questions or anything you'd like to highlight, Kevin, for your report, CIA?
Yeah, just a few things. One, I want to highlight what is in the report about our teacher leaders and instructional coaches driving the professional learning that's described in the report. I think that's worth a public mention. We could not possibly do that quantity and quality of professional learning without our teacher leaders and our instructional coaches. Two is the committees that devote their expertise and their thoughtfulness to forging our pathway forward with those efforts. We could not do any of this without the committees that are noted in the report. And finally, to all staff for embracing that learning. The learning is for others, and it is because they are embracing it that it will translate to impacts for our students. So very grateful to all of those humans for everything they are doing to make all of that possible.
Thanks for that. Any questions for Kevin on his report? All right. Moving on to Ed. Facilities update. Ed, do you have anything you'd like to report? Okay. Everything will be salted and shoveled and...
We're going to be ready for the sol. Everything will be plowed, salted. We're all good to go.
I just wanted, I don't know if this is facilities, but a lot of the kids get here at 7:00 AM in the morning, and all of those things will be...
Okay, moving on. Richard, did you have anything for technology? Questions for Richard? Moving on to finance update. Karen? Any questions for Karen? District space needs. We had a meeting last night, a community meeting. I could not attend. I was teaching. Did anybody want to give a report on that?
I can give a report. So we had the facilitating team meeting last night. We had 20, approximately 20, show up. Is that correct? 12, I'm sorry. 12, 20, they both start with T. So it was a very, it was a great meeting. They came up with a name for the team and started working on where, like, where it could be held, meetings could be held, working on presentation materials for the April community engagement meetings and talking through leadership for that team, for canvassing and communications and the various things. And so it was a really productive meeting, and it was amazing. Christine was there too. So, and Richard, as always, I just want to say, he has been leading and facilitating this referendum work, and he's doing an amazing job.
All right, any questions on that? Any future possible agenda items people would like to add? Moving on. Board Equity Committee report. Bushra?
Not a formal report per se, but we are planning, we heard the demand loud and clear. Bingo is coming back. It's just been a little hard with scheduling because March is the month of Ramadan, which a lot of our families practice. And we'll be fasting, so we want to be mindful to be inclusive of that. Oh, and we have the flyer right here. We've decided we're doing Wednesday, April 2nd, which could be a little controversial, could be a little fun. It's the day after the election, but does it matter to us? And it's 6:15 to 7:45 at McCracken. RSVP is requested because last year we had over 200 people. We want to make sure we have enough bingo cards, snacks, not enough prizes because only winners can win. Sorry.
All right. Board Policy Report. Maureen?
We had a meeting that was scheduled on the 28th, but we ended up canceling that. We have an upcoming policy meeting on the 25th, 6, 26th? I'm going to find it. Hold on. 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, so.
Ed Redd. Member Wolfinger couldn't be here, so I think member Amiwalah is going to do her report.
So Vicky attended the Ed Redd meeting via Zoom last week. Most of the meeting was a presentation by Robyn Schwartz regarding the current state of education. Some of her takeaways were everything from defining what an executive order is, coupled with how it's not a change in the law, it's just directive. She learned a lot about just immigration, different federal DE and I programs, and the way that federal government works and will impact some of our day-to-day education things. So member Wolfinger learned a ton. This is a very detailed report that she shared, and we're grateful that she represents us at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Nelson, NTDSC report?
Yes, we met on January 23rd, and it was a wonderful meeting. We, first of all, we talked about the summer construction because even though we just finished a major renovation, we're still short on space. We talked about the fact that enrollment is up 30 to 40%. And for that reason, they're looking into renting additional space at All Saints. So we're working on getting that area suitable. And that, oh, we had wonderful presentations from occupational health, as well as physical therapy, with all the wonderful work. And I just want to realize how lucky our kids are. And that's why people move to our district, because of all the resources that we have here.
Thank you for that. Finance Committee. We did not have a finance committee meeting, so we don't, oh, PTO, I had. Do we have a PTO report? PTO is working on bingo. Thank you very much, PTO people. Finance Committee did not meet this month. We do have, do we have a meeting scheduled? We have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, February 26th. Did I say that wrong?
Wednesday is February 26th, and that's when we have policy.
Okay, whatever.
Are we overlapping or just...
No, I think...
It doesn't matter if we overlap. I'm just saying, making sure. Well, then what the heck is this?
It says Thursday. So we're meeting Wednesday, February 26th at 7:00, but usually policy's earlier in the day. Yeah, so are we okay?
There's a typo in the agenda.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying we're not meeting at the same time as policy, right?
We are. What, you said what time?
7:00.
Oh, no. We're not. Just kidding. Yeah, we're good.
Same day. So if you really want to just like come all out, you could go to school, then you could come to policy, then you could come to finance committee meeting. It'd be a lot of fun.
I'm sure every eighth grader will be there.
Mm-hmm. Or teacher.
I promised snacks at the finance one.
Oh, well, there you go. Governance Committee, which oversees superintendent evaluation, met last week and has begun the evaluation process. Okay, so roll call. I need a motion to approve policy for adoption.
I'll make a motion to approve policy for adoption.
Second.
Motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Mercer. There isn't really any questions about this because we've already discussed it. But does anybody else have any questions about it again? Okay, so we just need a roll.
I was just going to say, you know, just for transparency's sake, the vast majority of these policies are just updates from ISBE. And then the one, actually, we already have it, is the exclusionary discipline report. So that we had asked for that to be reported in a different way, which we already talked about.
All right, thanks, Louis. So we need a roll call vote on this, please, America.
Member Amiwalah?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
A motion to approve policies for adoption passes. Moving on to new business. I need a motion to approve the e-learning plan for 2026.
I'll make a motion to approve the e-learning plan for 2026.
Second.
Motion made by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Nelson. I feel like we've already talked about this, but does anybody else have anything they want to say? All right, roll call.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
The motion to approve the e-learning plan for 2026 passes. Moving on to Item B. This is a discussion. This isn't actually anything that we need to vote on. It's a review of a financing plan and financing schedule. Karen, I'm going to turn it over to you, right?
Yes, and then I am going to invite Elizabeth Hennessy from Raymond James to come to the podium over here and give you a little bit of information and answer questions. Thank you, Elizabeth, for being with us tonight.
Do I need the microphone? Yeah.
We just have people listening at home, so.
Okay, good. Thanks, Karen. Give me one second. I, my paper copies got put in the other briefcase, so I'm just opening this on my computer. I assume you guys have this on your computers to follow along with the presentation? Great. Okay, so Elizabeth Hennessy from Raymond James, thanks for having me tonight. We talked a little bit about this a few months ago. Kind of let it go after that, and then Karen and I were reviewing the FY '25 budget and in light of some of the expenses and capital investment you're doing as you come through your capital plan, we thought this made even more sense because these non-referendum bonds can help pay for those capital costs associated with that master facility plan. So let me just get this up here. Thanks. You know what? It just pulled it up. Yep, thanks so much, Richard.
Elizabeth, just so you know, what they have is the proposed financing schedule, not, if you want them to reference the PowerPoint that you had given me last month, you guys will have to go back to the agenda from last month. I don't know which one you're going to be.
Yeah, the January 8th. The... I can, I can do either, so.
Okay.
Let me, so you don't have to pull anything else up. Let me just start with the schedule.
Okay.
And we'll go through that. So this schedule authorizes not to exceed $7 million general obligation limited tax school bonds that are issued for working cash, and they are tax exempt, so they must be spent on capital items, capital projects, things as you prepare for your capital plan. So just going to the schedule, you should have received in your board packet an authorizing resolution for action item tonight. Because in order to issue working cash bonds, we have to have the authorizing resolution approved by the board. Then that notice of intent would be published in the newspaper, and that would in fact appear in the local newspaper on Thursday, February 13th. That would begin a 30-day petition period, and if within those 30 days, 10% of the registered voters objected to the $7 million bond issue, then they would need to pick up a petition here at District Office, get the requisite number of names, and submit it back. And it has to be 10% of the registered voters. Then, moving forward to the meeting on March 11th, we would hold a public hearing on the issue of the working cash bonds. After that, we would distribute the preliminary offering document, preliminary official statement. We would have a meeting with the bond rating agencies to re-up the district's bond rating, which is currently AA2. We would distribute the parameters resolution for consideration by the board for its April 8th meeting. And that is the action item that authorizes the sale of bonds. So all the other items before that are authorizing you to do this. But actually, the resolution on April 8th is the authorization of the sale. So we would then move forward with the sale of the bonds on April 15th, and you would receive the funds by May 6th. So it would be within this fiscal year 2025. It would help offset any, you know, deficits related to spending on the capital facility plan. And then on May 12th, the final thing would be moving that working cash from the working cash fund into the O and M fund, which is where the funds have been spent on the capital planning. Any questions on the schedule?
Is this to cover work that's already been done or to cover work that is going to happen?
This is going to cover the capital expenses, things that you approved, the schematic planning, the BAS system that we need to do replacement of here at McCracken. So there are upcoming things. But it would, so that's what we, when we're saying this is a working cash bond, we have to issue it to working cash, and then that last resolution is moving it into the capital funds. And so you, working cash is where you issue it to, and then you move it to those projects. And so it has to be used for capital projects. So things that would last us, you know, 20 years or so type of things.
If we remember when the architects were talking about kind of like so much of our infrastructure, which is like 20 or 30 years old, right? So this, this money would go towards that. But to be clear, we're not voting on that money tonight. I think Elizabeth did a very good job of explaining it. So when we do, we do have to vote on the resolution, we're not actually voting, we're just voting on a resolution to declare the intention. We're not actually voting on the bond tonight.
It kind of starts the process. Yes.
Yeah, it's because it should, we can need to give the public time to review it and oppose it if they choose. Does anybody else, do you have anything else, Elizabeth, that you wanted to review?
Nope, just, you know, the bonds that we suggested the payback be 10 years, so it's going to be very quick. And then after five years, there would be a reduction in the payments so that you, if needed, in five years, you could issue these types of bonds again. And they're structured so that they don't increase taxes over the CPI. But this year, you know, there would be a slight increase. It would be about seven cents on the tax rate or about a $69 on a $360,000 home for these bonds because we've gotten below that CPI since we issued bonds last.
I, can I also just add that because we would be using some of this for the schematic design and other things, that we would potentially roll into the referendum bond, those items would not roll into that, and so it would lower that as well, just so you know.
Are there any other questions for Elizabeth? Thank you so much for coming and explaining the timeline and process. Karen, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay, so that means that I need a motion to approve, that's a long one. Motion to approve the resolution declaring the intention to issue not to exceed $7 million working cash fund bonds of the district for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district and directing that notice of such intention be published in the manner provided by law.
I make a motion to, for the resolution declaring the intention to issue not to exceed $7 million working cash fund bonds of the district for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district and directing the notice of such intention to be published in a manner provided by law.
Second.
Motion made by Member Latasha Nelson, seconded by Member Mercer. Are there any other questions about this? Okay, so roll call.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
I'm not going to read the whole thing. Motion to approve the resolution declaring the intention to issue not to exceed a $7 million working cash fund bond passes. Next up is policy for read and review. I don't know if either Maureen or Louis have anything they want to say about this.
No, these are just policies that we'll address at that February 26th meeting. So if there's anything specific that you'd like us to kind of represent at that meeting, just let us know now or before that meeting.
Yeah, and it's, it's really just wording changes if you look at it, so, yeah.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Amiwalah. As a reminder, there's no discussion on the consent agenda, so I need a roll call.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes, and was voted for Member Amawala. I don't know what. The motion to pass the consent agenda passes. Public comment. Anybody like to stand up and make public comment? Just as a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Crystal Johnson. I'm a member of the Niles Township Caregivers of SPAD 504 and Diverse Learners Group, but I'm not representing that group tonight. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the great questions that were raised about the potential end to IDEA dollars and getting clarification on what the end of those federal dollars would mean for services to our children. I want to ask that the school district send out some kind of formal communication to help everyone in the community better understand what the concerns are, what is known, what is not known, what the risks are, and what the likely impact would be on our children who rely on services that are covered by these kinds of federal grants. Right now, for example, there's a court case filed by 17 states that could potentially end 504 protections for our children. Obviously, people are pretty concerned about what that would mean for students. Parents of kids who rely on these services are legitimately scared about that and with good reason. And so it would be really helpful to hear, or at least I found it really helpful to hear where the school district stood on how it would respond if I showed up at our doors and that kind of clear communication and clarity about what would happen, what is known, and what could happen would really help families and students with disabilities as well. Also, for, this is just a personal perspective on my part, and I've got a one that's going to graduate soon, so then you'll, I'll be out of your hair and you won't have to worry about me anymore. But for future decisions about whether or not you're going to implement that remote learning policy that you do have access to, I would like to ask the board members to think deeply about the impact on students with disabilities when deciding whether or not to use those days. Speaking on behalf of a student with executive functioning challenges, like so many others, remote schooling for us can be tremendously stressful. It starts at 8:00 AM. It continues until 9:00 PM. And despite a tremendous amount of effort, reminders, adult check-ins all throughout the day, the work is still not done at 9:00 PM when we finally call it quits. So for students who lack executive functioning skills, navigating without those structures of classroom supports that they normally have access to can be really, really hard. Students with disabilities, I will be fair, have very different kinds of experiences with remote schooling. Some of them, it's the best thing ever, but for others, it can be really challenging. So I'm going to end with Team Snow Day all the way. There's nothing like a rejuvenating, restorative day during a time of year when everybody needs that pick-me-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Just a more shout-out, shout-out and also recognition, recognition for one of custodian. He is new to our building. His name is Terrance. And no matter how early I go to the building, he always busy working and he always very professional. I think he has a very, he probably doesn't even know, I think he has a profound positive influence for our children. And even he doesn't really interact with our kids, but I think he's, just his dedication and his work ethic, and I think they have a tremendous impact on our kids. I appreciate his, his work, and I just want him to be recognized. And I even took a picture of him in case people don't recognize him. But his name is Terrance, and I just want my community also know, doesn't matter what they do in our community, they will influence, influence our kids somehow. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Thanks. I think earlier, Matthew Levy from Skokie, from the district. I was going to mention, build off the point on the e-learning. I think because it was an open meeting, we're supposed to do comment then, but it's okay. The reason why I bring that up is I think it's great that we have it as an option in the back pocket. But I think we probably, for parents in the district, especially with younger kids, I don't think that it works if they have to work. I was very fortunate where I was able to be home and flex, and I'm really blessed where I had that opportunity. So it didn't impact me, but I know a lot of other people, especially those maybe who have to go to their work. It could be really critical. And if you want to know like a dollar estimate, like what does this cost the district? It could be between like $250,000 to $500,000, very conservatively, per day that we do e-learning. Because it could impact, if you like assume, I think it's like Skokie's $43,000 average per person, and their income 91,000 per household. If I round down 1,000 students and 185 school days, like the cost per day gets pretty, it's expensive. So if, if we can't, if we have to like suddenly do any learning day, it's very, it's very difficult, is what I'm trying to say on the district. Proactively planning for election days, that makes sense. Parents can at least schedule ahead, but I, I think we always want to think of it as like it is a cost to the district members to suddenly have to figure out work. So thanks. And I know you guys are parents. A lot of you on the board are parents already, and you've dealt with this. So just wanted to give that feedback. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Any other comments for public comment? Okay, well, with that, I lost my agenda on the screen, so I'll go old school.
The Finance Committee meeting, oh, you got it.
I got it. I just have to look at the paper. Well, as we recognize, there is a typo. It's okay. Finance Committee meeting Wednesday, February 26th at 7:00 PM. Also, Policy Committee meeting Wednesday, February 26th at?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, so that's an exciting day. Board of Education Workshop, Number Two, MTSS Response Instruction. These are actually really, really fascinating and interesting, so I would encourage the public to come to these. March 3rd at 5:30 here at McCracken. Next month, regularly scheduled board meeting, Tuesday, March 11th at 7:00 PM. And then most exciting thing on the calendar, Annual Bingo Night, Wednesday, April 2nd, 6:15. Please RSVP. It was loads of fun last year. And we also definitely need lots of volunteers, so anybody who's willing to volunteer their time to help out with setting up and managing Bingo Night, that would be great. I now need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Nelson. Roll call.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned. Be safe out there. Stay warm.